Display in the lobby and it ran in the Idaho Press in August eighth. As we get to the fiscal year twenty-three on our sixth page here. We, we had a few things that contribute to the projection that we create at the beginning of a fiscal year to the actuals at the end of a fiscal year. We started fiscal year twenty-three with a lot of change and complications due to lots of staff changes and just in off between times of mute that process a little bit rocky to start, but we got it. All sorted out and straightened. We received an extra five hundred thousand in contacts revenue in fiscal year twenty-three beyond what we had projected. Due to reductions in personnel costs for a number of reasons, delayed opening Orchard Park, reduced cost on benefits, turnover, those things that we had reduced costs in personnel and we were able to assign additional increases to the general fund reserve that we were required to have by state law and to add additional funds to the capital repair replacement fund, which is very important for us as we go forward with the charity remodel over the coming years. The fiscal year twenty-three amended budget general fund changed by eight point eight three percent. And here you can see the expenditure increases and the expenditure decreases in terms of percentages. The general fund reserve and the capital repair replacement fund are in dollar amounts because those were at zero dollars, so we can't do a percentage on that. So showing this in terms of the dollar amount versus the percentages, just to make it a little clearer. When we look through the budget, the amended budget for the expenditure flow we're amending to what was approved, we can see just another way of looking at what those are. So we have the big numbers at the top, which are the transfers to the repair and replacement fund in Canada, general fund, six month reserve, which allows us to operate from the startup fiscal year to the first installment payment provided by the county in late January, early February. So we're required to have money to be able to operate for that stretch of time. And then capital, some changes there and then some reductions, like I said, with personnel and operations. As we get down to the proposed budget, the four pieces that we look at are the general fund revenue, general fund expenditures, capital projects fund revenue and capital projects fund expenditures. This is a slide that was presented to you all in July as well. So we'll belabor that, so we have enough time to kind of keep going. Our budget process is as follows. We assign staff to create need-based budgets, requests, and then the library director, myself, the assistant directors, and the accounting and finance manager review the budget request. The accounting manager uses the LT form from the county to establish what our property tax revenue and foregone balances will be heading into fiscal year. And then the accounting manager, myself, compile a balanced budget based on need projections and revenue. And that's what will be in front of you tonight. The, this is again another slide that you saw in July, so spend too much time on it, but this breaks down what our general fund revenue and general fund expenditures are. The foregone that is called out on the left side of the screen there is calculated into the revenue above, but for the purposes of the resolution later tonight to collect that foregone, we have it here to show you that as well. So there's two buckets. There's capital and there's operating, so two different foregone pieces. So those are funds that we, we had not collected in previous fiscal years and will be collecting this year to offset some of the expenditures for opening the new locations. And we'll kind of just breeze through here to the next one. This is the capital projects fund. This is what we use to build, buy, or repair, replace our bridges essentially. And this is where the plant facility levy that was passed in twenty nineteen is accounted for. And it also is where we have grants donations and when we do the purchase sale agreement for South Ranch, the bond financing for that as well. This is a quick chart to show the fiscal year twenty-three amended versus the fiscal year twenty-four proposed. With blue, the dark blue being fiscal year twenty-three amended and green being fiscal year twenty-four proposed and looking at the changes in those as we go forward. Alright, I'm not trying to breeze through it too quickly, but we are trying to stay on schedule here. This is to show what our levy rates are and by state statute, library districts can do a point zero 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 six levy rate. Ours for fiscal year twenty-three is almost half of that. It will be going up a little bit in fiscal year twenty-four, but that is largely due to changes at the legislative level and also because of property values and exceptions and a large number of other things that are outside of our control largely. So when we look at, like I said, the less assessed value, more exemptions, you'll, we see those changes in how our leverage is factored. So essentially, we taxable value for the district went down by two point four billion dollars from the current fiscal year to this next fiscal year. So though a big chunk of change was not have available to us to tax against. So that's, that's how some of those numbers came about. With that, we are to the public comment section, and so I will head back over.
Thank you, Nick. So before we proceed to public comment, any further comments from the trustees or questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, Terry, Nick, come on. So just a reminder of public comment, we give folks three minutes to speak, so we are limited to the proposed budget as our topic. And we will accept comment, do a question and answer, but of course, if there are questions for the board, we can take note of those and address them.
Everything's going on good night, so just talk loud. Sorry.
Talk loud.
Welcome, Terry.
Okay, so I do have questions, but so I don't know if you just want me to present those or how.
Yeah, we welcome those questions. I think we will address them offline, but if you want to, yeah, if you want to share your questions with us, then we can make sure that they get answered.
Okay, so I did email you guys and I was looking for a detailed, you know, breakout of the budget. I didn't get anything back from you at this point in time, so that's just that one comment there. And then my questions, so then you guys can talk among yourselves or whatever you do. So the first one, and Nick, you might have addressed it kind of. The increase in personnel, is that mainly because of Orchard Park or is it just overall through the library district? Is the increase in operations because of Orchard Park or is it just an overall increase in operations across the board? And I think you answered this, but I want to make sure. The fifteen and the million five hundred is actually from the bond levy. I was trying to figure out if it was coming from loan proceeds or if it was coming from, and you said, I think you said bond levy, so I wasn't sure about that one. I wanted to know what actually is considered capital. You just have a line called capital in the general fund expenditures for three forty-eight, eight seventy-two, and I was just trying to figure out exactly what capital was. Did the district take the full three percent tax increase that they could take? How much will the foregone recovered in the amount of one sixty-six, eight seventeen increase the taxpayers' costs? And then I wanted to know how much is available in the foregone that hasn't been taken. I, that's been set aside, I guess, in past years or maybe used at all. But if there's any available for general use and for capital use, what those, if there's available in those balances?
Terry, I'm sorry to interrupt. If I could just clarify, do you mean for a future year?
Right, right now you're taking this one, but I wanted to know, you know, how much you have actually set aside that's available to be taken and you just haven't taken it yet? I wanted to know, and I may have not been here when this was done, so when does the bond levy, the tax levy expire? And then what is the total plant facilities tax levy per year that you guys can take, I guess, and when will it expire? And those are my questions. So I'm, I'm really good. I, I definitely am.
Right down to, the board would indulge me for just a second. I think there's a couple that we can clear up real quickly. So the plant facility levy was passed in twenty nineteen. It is a ten-year levy, one point four million dollars a year, fourteen million in total. It is exactly the same amount every year. That levy was passed with the super majority of Meridian voters, so it ends in twenty twenty-nine. We do not have a bond levy. We have levy for operations. We have plant facilities. We don't have any bonds. And then the remaining expenses, I will, or the remaining questions, I should say, we will follow up with you offline. We have, oh, that's the last thing. We did receive your email requesting the detailed breakout of the budget, so all of our financial information that is submitted to the board each month is posted online on our website, but the public can view those packets. It shows dispersments. It shows dollar amounts for every line item. And if you're looking to see what types of expenditures go in which line item and so forth, all of that is readily available on our website as well as all the dispersments that we make each month. So there is a good, good deal of detail available to the public via our website. Okay, so there is, no one else signed up? Public comment tonight, so that includes, includes the public comment portion of our meeting. It is seven oh seven and we will close the public hearing. Of all the times we have a short break, but since we're a little over time, we'll just carry right on. And call to order the regular business meeting of the library and library district. It is seven oh seven PM on Wednesday, August sixteenth. We will open our business meeting with the public comment item. And there is no one currently signed up, so we will move right forward to item number two, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are routine and acted on with one motion without discussion. Of course, if any one of the trustees would like to remove an item from consent and add it to the agenda to be discussed, we can certainly do that. Far in that, we have the regular meeting minutes for July nineteenth, special meeting minutes for August second, an amendment to our regular meeting dates, and three doc descriptions to consider. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aneer.
Thank you, Josh.
I agree that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you. So then, thank you, Jeff, for the comment. Oh, sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item number three on our agenda, the financials for June of twenty twenty-three. This is what I was referring to moments ago in our public hearing. These, listen, our financial reports that go before the board are available to the public on our website as well following the meeting. So we have before us action items to approve the June twenty twenty-three financial reports as well as approve the dispersals, dispersments. Comment from Nick or Emma?
I don't have any on that.
I would like to say that we are on track fiscal year to date. We're doing very well. Financials presented were current and you can see that reflected on the financials. And we are ready to wrap up this fiscal year and start another one. Fantastic. A marked improvement over, where we were at this time last year with some of the transition that Nick talked about. So I commend Nick and his staff for, for a beautiful job in bringing us clarity and kindness to all of that. Okay, questions, comments from the trustees on the financials?
Aneer.
Go ahead, Josh.
I just want to say, great job. I'm wrapping that up. And a question popped into my mind just recently. And I don't want to create more work, but yeah, if you had ballparked the financial impact to the budget based on hours and dealing with the concerns of the Meridians, petition and what impact that had to, you know, if you had to quantify it. I know that's going to be challenging because an hour spent, you know, preparing for that, an hour spent not spent doing something else in primary duty, for example. Is there a way to capture a number of what that impact was financially, like putting a dollar value on it?
Somewhat. And I hesitate only because it's not something that we tracked in real time from an hours standpoint. We could ballpark it.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I want. Or is this a ballpark I can't get in?
I could, I could put that together real quick. Well, not real quick, but I could probably run some, some general calculations, but I mean, we're talking hundreds of hours across different K grades. So plus attorneys and whatnot, so we're
But you know, you're saying some of that is some cost that's already
It's, like I said, it's not on top of, it's at the expense of other things. So in terms of, it's quantifiable with estimation, but that would without context be someone misleading and be in the sense that it's not a cost that was incurred, but was essentially, the more, like the number, the dollar number is important, but the, the hours number is, is really the true crucial piece.
I, I would really appreciate having some kind of
But I thought
Hours and number or hours, hours, one hours. So I should, since we're wrapping the twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, that was a spike in our calendar.
I will put them together and have it ready next month. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nick. Additional questions or comments on the financials? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the FY twenty-two, I'm sorry, the June twenty twenty-three financial reports and dispersments.
Aneer.
Go ahead, Josh.
I agree that we approve the June twenty twenty-three financial reports and dispersments as published.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Destiny, for the comment. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number four on our agenda, the budget documents. We have three action items before us tonight, the approval of the amended twenty twenty-three budget, the approval of the proposed twenty twenty-four budget, and the big resolution to recover the foregone. As Nick just detailed for us, the board did get to the original draft of the budget in the July meeting and had a detailed presentation from our planning and finance manager. We held a special meeting on, in early August, August second, sorry, September, September second, where we reviewed the budget again and approved it for publication. It was published both here at the library and our display board and in the Idaho Press as well as being available on our website for review. We conducted our public hearing. So that brings us to our actions tonight. We've had lots of budget discussions leading up to this time. If there are further questions on the amended twenty twenty-three budget, this is the time. Or if the board is ready for action, I would entertain a motion.
And just to remind everybody, because this is not consent agenda, each of those bullet points that will need to be in individual action. Just wanted to remind at the top.
Aneer.
Go ahead, Josh.
Aneer, I agree that we approve the amended fiscal year twenty-three budget as published and presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny, for the comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Sorry.
Go ahead. Okay, opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next item. I won't repeat myself, but we could discuss the proposed twenty twenty-four budget in detail as well. I would entertain a motion.
Aneer.
Go ahead, Josh.
I agree that we approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget as published and presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, that brings us to the foregone resolution, the FY twenty twenty-four recovered foregone tax resolution was provided to us in our packet. We are recovering foregone tax of a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen in FY twenty twenty-four. I would entertain a motion.
Aneer.
Go ahead, Josh.
I agree that we approve the foregone resolution as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny, for the comment.
Aneer.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that O and M stands for operations and maintenance and it's broken down, sorry.
And that language reflects the statutory language of how the resolution is raised and how the foregone amounts are determined.
And to clarify, with foregone, it's a tool that was instituted by the state of Idaho roughly twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago. There's been changes throughout that time. Taxing entities have, some have zero balances, some have extraordinary pay balances. There's been restrictions put on how you can use those funds, how much of those funds you can use, and there's caps on all of those things. This essentially clears that up so that we don't have that carried forward for the district as something that we will need to deal with in future years.
So just to clarify in my mind, so the slide I mentioned levy rates and then dot double over triple oh six and we're about half out of the dot double over triple oh three rate. The remainder of that max allowable is what would be subject for foregone clawback, if you will, in following years, subject to limitations by the legislature.
Not, not quite.
Sorry, I misunderstood anything.
No, so essentially if, if, let's say, if the district were, good example, if the district was dissolved and was to be created again, you would be coming back at most likely a double rate so that because you'd be starting from scratch and you'd need a lot of startup funds. And so you would have to tax at a higher rate to get up to that amount. And so in essence, a, a new district would have the ability to start at a higher, highest rate. But because we're in a community in the state that has grown exponentially over time, that the dollar amount that we, our budget, that we, we love that, the actual number of our budget that we levy to can only increase by three percent a year, but our taxable or what is available for us to tax to is way, 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 way higher than that. And so what happens is instead of being a point zero service or a six levy rate, that top dollar line, that top line item is spread further and further out over time. And so the percentage that individuals owe goes down because of more people, essentially, if you can only go up so much. So that's essentially how the levy rates eventually go down over time, even buckets remain the same or grow. The foregone is more in relation to not taking the amount with which you are authorized to take. And so if an entity were to take less than what they are allowed to take based on the previous year's budget and with any increases or what, or they increased, now they would create a foregone. I'm looking at it to make sure that I didn't misspeak, but try to simplify it as much as I could.
I think you summarized just fine. It's very concise. I went, Director Groh, so Hospital three eighty-nine, a couple of years ago was passed. So the, there's the taxable value and then there's new construction, so new property is added to the tax rules in here and those are treated separately. So it used to be three percent busting construction and then possibly three eighty-nine, there was limitations to take place on how much of that new construction we could capture. And it was to be limited to nine percent to a book part of that. You know, very fast growing community like Meridian, new construction, dollar and all was significant, so we would have the authorization to capture all of that, but not the need in our budget because it was so significant. So that difference between what we could have taken and what we actually needed minus the foregone and you have an opportunity, subject to some very complicated rules that I won't attempt to state here. Subject to some rules and restrictions imposed by the legislature, you can recover what you could, if you can, or if you can not. And so that's what we're, but it's three-year rolling and it's, there are very tight controls on what we're going to take.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong? I think very well, but if the entire, if, for example, the assessed value of personal property were to double overnight, the levy rate would be halved. Is that true? Is it correct?
Real property.
Yeah, real property. Yeah, if your home assessed home value were to double. I mean, I know that you kind of really mentioned to it, but essentially.
In a extremely simple, by the way, yes, but also kind of.
Okay, fair enough.
Right, as, as value goes up, the levy rate is going to go down often. And as levy is probably going down.
I have no more discussion.
If you want, I can join and explain it on the spreadsheet and I will
Nope, nope, nope. There's something going on.
Trustees at Idaho State Tax Commission conduct budget levy training every year. It is a fascinating four hours of your day. I'm not agreeing with fascinating. Madam Chair, I find training fascinating. I did see a slide sent from Director Groh, but I'd like to speak for myself. Director Groh, would you please clarify what we will be using the foregone money for?
Yes, the foregone, as I stated earlier in the pull-up, so I don't misspeak hopefully here, is in two different buckets. Pull it up so that I can try to say it correctly here. So the foregone is in two buckets. One is capital and one is operating. And it, it goes to, for capital that will be used in the FME, which is furniture, fixtures and equipment for self which is furniture, fixtures and equipment for South Branch. And the operating will be related to the South Branch project as well.
Further questions or comments? To chart back where we were, we had a motion in a second to approve the foregone resolution. Any further comment? All those in paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appreciate that discussion. Um, yeah, I, I have the, I have the budget levy training. It is a good one for a trustee to kind of get the overview, but there is a lot to it, so. So that brings us to item number five. This is a discussion item for us. We have the updates from the director and the written reports included in our packet. And they're always a delight to read about some of the kind of personal stories or the anecdotal interactions with our patrons. Director Grob?
Thank you. The training, just, I highly recommend it. But the foregone, there are a lot of percentages and qualifications with what something means sometimes and not other times. There, it's very hard to follow the first time, so. All right, so I'm going to run through two different parts of my update tonight. I will try to keep it brief and let them know if you have questions as I go. We'll, we'll start with monthly updates and then I'm going to go over a little bit more of the organizational design because I'd like you to have a good understanding of what we're working on with that. So our admin updates, HR has been busy getting the positions filled and making sure that our teams are fully staffed. We still have some vacancies and we'll have some additional vacancies to fill as we do everyone. And they were able to work with the state insurance fund to decrease our mod rate, which is essentially the percentages with which our staff are assigned codes. And that is how much we pay for workers' compensation. As things roll off over, I think it's a three-year rolling period, our mod rate will significantly decrease in fiscal year 2024, which is very nice for promotions. The Meridian Library Foundation and the Friends of the Library. We have a few updates from foundations. They were, the foundation was able to secure an AED machine to install at Orchard Park and also bring in an AED trainer for staff. The foundation was also selected as the best philanthropic organization from the Reading Chamber. That was a fun phone call to give from the Chamber. So very excited and proud of the foundation for the work that they did in getting Orchard Park running and switching gears to begin raising funds and securing funding for the next project, which is South Branch. Support services, HVAC has been something we've talked about a lot over the years here at Trailing. It is holding together, but not by much. I had a four A phone call recently, so I'm assuming one will be coming soon. The fire department and I really like to see each other super early. Don't know why. It always goes off at four, but that's about how it goes. So finally getting some of the final pieces for the operator doors at Orchard Park for accessibility. And we're waiting, one subcontractor waiting on the other subcontractor to finish a few things up over there. And we'll be upgrading some of the audio visual equipment at Unbound, which will finalize some of the ideas that we had when we were conceptualizing the new building for Unbound a few years ago. We're looking at our support services. Just give you a quick breakdown of the use of our computers and our networks and the, the busy nature of our collection development and materials systems with adding and removing items and the, you know, 145 patron initiated requests this past month as well. The circulation statistics, always great to see green on that parterite column continue to go up from last year. And it's, the, the one I always look at is the account creation. Seeing that we're above 900 for the month of July, which is a huge increase from last year. It speaks to what our teams are doing on the front lines out there every day. Again, a lot of the green numbers here with door count going up significantly, three D prints going up significantly and our outreach interactions, which is when members of our community or our teams go out and participate in activities, interactions, programs in the community. And so we're continually see those go up every year or every month and every year. The reference questions is one that, in my 20 years of libraries is curable. It's, it's one of the harder ones to have a true gauge on, especially when you're looking like month to month. People either ask a lot of questions or they don't. So you can get more people to come in the door, but you can't necessarily have them ask more questions. Lots of programs, lots, lots of programs. Again, the green numbers are huge and we are doing as many programs as we can. The community would love us to do even more, but we, we have staff and space capacity that we have to factor in. So we're doing as much as we can to continually improve and add to those programs. And greens across the board for the attendance of those programs. As you can see, we had almost 3,500 people attend our programs in the month of July.
So Nick, before you move on to the presentation, just pause there on the operational side. Just pause there on the operational side if there are questions or comments from the trustees there.
Judge, Nick, have you seen any impact on door counts at Trailing since Orchard Park was opened?
I have, I haven't looked at the specifics. I am going to defer to the assistant directors and see if they can give a solid answer.
It's mostly just kids.
Yeah.
Especially when it seems people aren't grabbing at here.
I do know that Tricia is going to be able to answer that from our perspective. Been talking with the links library directors. Other libraries, specifically Eagle, has seen dramatic changes in their patronage due to the Orchard Park opening. And so they've made some choices to emulate some of what Orchard Park offers and, but they're definitely seeing decreased numbers. And largely that is Meridian patrons returning to use Meridian versus members of other library districts that come to Orchard Park, which we have a lot of that, we've recouped a lot of our patrons that live within a one-mile radius of Orchard Park. I will defer to Tricia or Trailing.
We've seen a slight decrease in Trailing going from an average of about 20,000 to about 18,000 to 19,000. But we're seeing a lot of new users use Orchard Park where the door counts there are an average of 11,000. And if you want, I'm happy to invite that breakout in the next quarter or four.
No, that's good. I'm happy to listen. That's great, great number.
I mean, I think that that would be consistent with, in the past, we've had that heat back and you can see how library cardholders cluster close to the location. So, and that staggering 53% growth in the number of account holders. I mean, it's just fantastic to see that pent-up demand being addressed. Of course, some people will number out, but that's much interesting, I think. And I think it'll be interesting if Boise is able to add their West Boise library and how that impacts in that sort of area between Eagle and ourselves and that area we're much further east or west of.
Other comments?
I'm just thrilled to see the circulation number total check out to Meridian. And we've still got some time left, some of the air. And so just trying to use the library and then adding over 3,200 items in a single month. And I think that that's important to think about as we think about some of the requests from around restricting materials that we've heard and how challenging that would be without adding any items to the library every month, what a daunting, daunting task that would be. Okay, anything else there? Um, I, one other question on Orchard Park. The 24-hour hold pickup, I was waiting on some technology.
I will again defer to the assistant director who will have better information on the answer than that.
Thank you.
So it's, it's a little complicated when we first, so that, you know, we understand that you give the core shell, the potential approval aspect of it. Did the core shell process and we still don't know who it is. Somebody came along, the electrician ran the water like they were supposed to, activating the AED operators. Somewhere along the way, somebody said, hey, we don't get it anymore, get rid of it. And then somebody else came along and said, no, 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 why'd you get rid of it? Put it back. And my understanding of how this story goes is that the electrician was so frustrated that he just ran the cable, but didn't terminate any of the cables. And then the drywall people came along and closed it all up. So all that is to say, the, the 24-hour operator, really the idea is that, you know, you scan your card, you type in your code, the right door opens for you, the one that has the door opener. And right now it doesn't. So there's some logistical issues with pages walking up and opening the wrong door and getting frustrated. So we want this experience to be seamless, so we're virtually slow walking the entire process until we get that fixed. Once we get that fixed, we can open up the sample group, the demo group to a larger audience. Unless we open a large audience and people get the idea of the flow and they give us the feedback and then we'll be prepared to get it some time in the fall.
Fantastic. I appreciate that update. And the construction challenges would be funnier if they weren't. But I appreciate that staff is continuing to work through that. Great, yeah. Okay, anything else here? Since I don't see South Branch on the agenda, I may just add an update for the board on that. So we had a good meeting with the Bright team today. That is, lots happening with that project that they're already to submit to the super approval as early as next week. They have already, and correct me if I phrase this wrong, they have already received the zone approval.
The, the plat.
Yeah.
The plat allows us to define exactly what the property line will be for the project.
Yeah, so they reiterated their excitement and their commitment to the project and it is, it is moving forward. So if it continues to go well, we expect an agreement to come before the board for review in September with the goal of bringing that back for approval in October on the acquisition of the library branch there. So, and then we look forward sometime late next year, seeing another big uptick in our cardholders when this comes online. Okay.
Sorry, I'm a little slow on this, but Jason, you mentioned the electrician leaving unterminal. Isn't there an electrical inspection that goes in where the city looks at buildings and the electrical wires inside there, make sure it's safe? I, it's not like an unsafe thing, like there's live wires that are in gap that burn like sound, right?
No, it's, so the AED operator inherently just carries on power, so that key, that is connected. And then it goes into, it was supposed to go into a junction box. And that was supposed to be turned to give it live wire, but they just let the cable sit there. And then the drywallers really are just drywalling, so they just put drywall on the ceiling and covered it up and, but it's safe. There, there's no live wires in the walls. It was just a cable that wasn't plugged in essentially.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, and seeing nothing else, we will go forward then to the next part of the next update.
Cool, thank you. All right, so the second part of my update is going to talk about the new organizational design. I mentioned it last month. I'm going to go into it a little bit more detail and the high-level pieces of it, but also kind of how everything is connected. Hopefully these colors somewhat show up on these screens. It's a little hard to see, but it'll get a little bit better as we go. The organizational design is something that our library has been working on for a long time in different iterations. It is a piece of our current strategic plan that the board approved a few years ago. Our strategic plan is through the year 2025 and goal number five talks about organizational design and structuring so that we have the proper balance of staff and services provided throughout the district. And we, we are limited in terms of how much space we have to house employees at each location. And our budget is not something that can just grow based on need alone. And so we, we have to make changes in order to properly address the needs of our community and be thoughtful in how and why. And also, one of the things that we've looked at is how do we build consistency? How do we instill leadership? How do we instill embedded librarianship and outreach as philosophies in the design of our organizational structure and what we envision our staff doing in service to our community? And so some changes are big, some are little. But as, as you all know, all change can be a challenge one way or another. And so we're working through it and trying to, one of the hardest things, two of the hardest things, communication and timing. There's a certain amount of announcing changes and then having time to implement them. And that is why last month we asked for the staff implementation day. But also not having it hanging over people's heads for months and months or years at a time without being able to actually execute on the vision. So we're trying to balance that out as much as we can. Some of the actions of the dissolution, the spring through arrangements of some of our timing, but we're continuing forward. So all that to say is that this is the high level of our organizational design. Residents of the library district elect the board of trustees who report back to the community, to the residents of our district in this forum and others. The library board hires the director. The director reports back to the people as well in terms of what services and what we provide to our community. Looking at how we are going to break down the departments or divisions where we, we will have an admin division, a branches division, an operations division. We saw that in the last month with the assistant director positions that directly relate to those, two of those divisions with branches and operations respectively. And as we talked about, and Josh, you took a few in terms of like being very deliberate in what departments are, what teams are, what divisions are. And one of the things that we'll be talking about a lot next week with our staff for staff implementation day is roles and responsibilities and making sure that there's clear expectations, guardrails and whatnot. is roles and responsibilities and making sure that there's clear expectations, guardrails and whatnot for everybody in terms of what they're expected to do. As our library has grown over a hundred, to be a staff of over a hundred people, we do not expect our staff to do everything. But we also don't want them to be so specialized that they're not fulfilling what they got into this profession to do. I've worked in extremely small libraries and you have to wear a lot of different hats. And some of the organizational design is to allow and encourage people to not wear something hat so that we don't have burnouts, so that we do have consistency, so that there is a reasonable expectation of who does what. So with that, we'll go to the next one. So the generic structure of our branches, beginning to say this before, but branch manager will have the, a branch supervisor report to them in most cases. And then they will have the librarian and the associate librarians report directly to them. Then library assistants, library recruiters, and library pages, for the most part, will report to branch supervisors. When we look at the first division, this is the admin division with myself as library director. One other qualifying piece that I'd like to say is when we did all of this, we purposely looked at all of the positions, roles, and responsibilities with outlook at who was it? We wanted to make what we designed not be individual dependent. If somebody leaves, gets promoted, changes positions, we want the positions to stay the same. And really leaning in and making sure that we have something that works for us now, that is also adaptable means our future means as well. So assistant directors, the executive assistant, and then human resources accounting, finance, and foundation managers reporting correctly to the director. The departments within the admin division are finance, human resources, and library foundation. And realizing as I say this, that I didn't get one, actually, I did get it, I'll talk about it in a second. These are the departments, the managers of those departments. And then human resources has two people under them, human resources coordinator and recruitment coordinator. Now when we step down to the admin team, this is where we have the executive assistant and the two admin assistants that report to that position. And Dan is very excited to be getting those admin assistants to offload some of the work that he's had to absorb without permission currently. We are in the final stages of getting that process wrapped up, I believe. When we look at the branches division, the assistant director of branches oversees directly the four branch managers. So materially Orchard Park, Silverstone, and Unbound Manager. With the Silverstone manager not only responsible for Silverstone, but also for Tiny. And Unbound is also oversees the history center staff at City Hall. And with this, we'll see a little bit here in a minute, but looking at how do we structure where things live. And so one of the things that you won't see in this organizational design we currently have is our outreach team. And the reason for that is it's integrated into the branches and looking at, as I said earlier, outreach as a philosophy and not a department. It is something that I expect all of our branches, all our higher district to engage in. It's not something that is the sole responsibility of a small number of people. We want to encourage our teams to be out in the community more because we believe library services started our four walls. We're going in there. So it's an important piece of how we are structuring things with purpose. So trailing, looking at this, two branch supervisors reported to the branch manager, a community librarian and a youth services librarian, along with four library associate librarians will report to the branch manager here at trailing. And those are the primary drivers, the librarians and the associate librarians of the bookmobile. So the bookmobile is not going away just because the Department of Outreach is going away. It's just it's structured differently internally with how we plan and schedule those things. And the two supervisors will oversee a lot of people. But when we look at the F P E, where the whole time equivalent, it was something that we factored into the designs of the organizational design so that there was an equitable number of F P E that reports to each supervisor, each manager. And so you'll see some discrepancies on the total number of people. But what we're not seeing here is the number of hours that those staff are hired at. So some are forty, some are twenty-nine, some are nineteen. And so just one of the, when you start to see big differences in numbers, there's some reasons that go along with that. And then as we step over to the Orchard Park, having another branch supervisor over there. And as you'll see, consistency here, having the community librarian, youth services librarian, and the associate librarians. And just for the sake of making it more explain it as we go, but the librarians and the associate librarians, those are the grouping of people that are responsible primarily or almost exclusively for being our programs at our branches and out in the community. Again, looking at the supervisor teams, this one you'll see a slight difference. You're not going to be able to see it from this far away unless you have really a nice sight. But the branch supervisors will oversee library assistants and library pages. So the front desk people and the people who primarily work with the material handling, the sorter machines and getting items back on shelves and that nature of work. But a big change here is getting our home delivery service moved over to Orchard Park. And we will be expanding the number of hours we currently serve the community with our home delivery service by adding another library career. And so our hope is that we will be able to get close to serving the community with home delivery a similar amount of hours as to what we are open to the public each week, which is sixty-four hours at all of our branches with the et cetera about. So see some changes structurally, but it, we're really excited about what we'll be able to offer with that. Looking at Silverstone, not huge changes here, and that is because they are squeezed for space. But what we have done is plan both for right now and for when the South Branch project is complete and we're moving in. Those changes won't be happening staffing wise for the most part in fiscal year twenty-four, but we have planned out what that looks like when we get to that point in fiscal year twenty-five. So the biggest change here is adding in the branch supervisor that will refer to the branch manager, which allows, if we go to the next slide, the again, library systems and the one library page to report to the branch supervisor. This will take some of the administrative burdens off of branch managers so they can focus on those higher level planning, strategic thinking. And in the case of Silverstone, working on the development and planning for the South Branch project. Unbound, no changes here. We've already made the change to bring the digitization technician under the purview of the Unbound team. And the reason is a proximity to City Hall for Unbound, but also a high level of technical experiences and knowledge that goes into the work that they have come over at the industry center. All that to say though, the designs that we have in front of you and showing in what we've intentionally done here is to create those roles and responsibilities, but also to have a focus on working together across locations. And what I don't have on any of our slides, but we completely revamped our committee structure, which is where we do projects and training and other pieces. So we built an entirely new committee structure that brings in people from all locations, departments, teams, divisions to work on things like communications, programs, training, safety, things of those nature. And we built in leadership opportunities for our librarians and our associate librarians to chair those committees, subcommittees, working groups so that they can get some of that professional development experience of leading people, of leading groups, and not doing all of the work themselves, learning how to delegate. And being someone who's grown up working in libraries my whole life, I've had a lot of experiences in my career that not everybody always has. And so creating to be, I keep saying, but intentional in how do we provide our staff the opportunities to grow their skills either for their own personal sake, to grow them to be ready for their next career move. And in a lot of ways selfishly for us to be able to have that division of labor, to have that that spread out workflow and processes so that if somebody does leave, somebody does get promoted, that we can continue what we do without significant interruption. And so there's a lot of pieces to why we've done some of the decisions that we've done. Switching to the last division here, this is the operations division. It is the back of office stuff for the most part. So the two departments here are in the material services and strategic initiatives. And then those managers report to the assistant director along with the system administrator, which is I T, and the maintenance coordinator. The few departments that are for material services and for strategic initiatives, a little busy here, but with material services, we have our collection development librarians who are the people who select what goes in and out of our collections. And the resource coordinators and the resource specialists, making sure that it all hits our shelves. And they do a zillion other things that I am glad that they do it because I don't have the patience to look at some of those mark records that go into making sure that people can find items in our collection, both on the shelves and in our catalog. The strategic initiatives manager is a new position. And under that position, we'll have the digital services librarian, the marketing librarian that we have going in front of you tonight. Make sure I have the right name. And a community librarian, there's an asterisk on the community librarian that is shown here. But this position is slated to move to South Branch, sorry, correct, South Branch when we go in. We don't have the space obviously to, this kind of have all of the positions we need at South Branch at Silverstone. So this allows them to continue doing some of the things that they're doing currently, but also being able to start working towards what that's going to look like in the future as well. Junior librarians is something we had in the past. Our current group that we have this year was grant funded and they had a slightly different focus. But rather than finding who has the availability to take these positions upon, we are making sure that they have a structure within our organization. And then a circulation coordinator, this is another new position. It is something that is currently called out in the links library consortium agreements that we have. And that is something that is currently added to somebody's responsibilities. And so again, this is a way for us to make sure that people aren't wearing too many hats. And this position can have a much more district outlook without having to also be tied to an individual branch on top of what we need to do for the circulation coordinator position. And with that, I have hit the end of the organizational design. Hopefully it didn't completely bore you, but I really did want you to see how all those pieces fit together because you have seen a lot of job descriptions recently. And you'll see some more tonight, and then some more again next month. And so I just want to help you see how those pieces are tailored.
Thank you, Nick. It is a significant undertaking certainly, but I look forward to seeing how that plays out. And I think the consistency across the locations and then also the committee structure that you mentioned. I think it's a couple of great opportunities there to kind of bring folks from the different branches together and see that consistency across locations. Questions, comments from the trustees?
Go ahead, Josh. Nick, I'll echo that. This is fantastic work. Can you go back to the slide that was in the very beginning and showed the Board of Trustees as a director to public community? And while he's calling it up, Terry, I feel like we should apologize to you. As a public comment, that email that went unanswered is unacceptable. We as a Board of Trustees have a responsibility. I saw that come through and I figured out the communications director is someone who's taken care of that and has replied to you with the point out to the budget and you know, where you can find some of that information on our website. And kind of tying in with that, this slide, I think, currently on the M L B website, it kind of talks about our leadership team. I think this is a really valuable thing. Any public facing job positions should really be called out on a who we are page or our leadership team. So the public knows pages, purchases, the name and the face, and then click on a link to email or reach out if they have questions specifically about a branch or you know, whatever the case may be or the topic. And obviously Nick's going to catch a lot of that. But I think that would be pretty useful. And gosh, another thing that I thought about as you're going through this organizational chart, I know that we've been approving job descriptions. Do you need the board to approve an organizational structure plan as outlined at some point? Or would that be useful? Or is that just going to, by approving the job descriptions, we're giving implied consent or approval of your strategic organizational plan?
Great question on that. So many train answers to the question, did I correct it here? From my understanding, no, that is not something that the board needs to approve as. as a function of what they are tasked with doing. And I believe my readings of bylaws and statutes, that it is in the form of the job description pieces and the policy, and the handbook and that nature. The structure largely would be considered operational and it would be the purview of the director essentially. Could be corrected on that. If, Megan, you've been on the board, Jeff, you've been on the board, I don't know. I'm misstating that to that point. And then I'll come back to the other question.
Well, I think as Nick opened his comments talking about fulfilling the objectives of the strategic plan and delivering services in line with the strategic plan, what is the best operational structure to deliver those objectives? So the board did it for the strategic plan, and then this is a implementation of that guidance from the board. And so I think approving this separately is probably not necessary. Job descriptions are required to give groups.
Fair enough. And then my last comment is that, Nick, I think that once this is, you know, fully implemented and fleshed out and names and, you know, all this stuff sorted, I think it's probably worth sharing with other libraries of similar size and, you know, who are not the first, and I mean, this is kind of groundbreaking type stuff that maybe potentially be worth sharing at a higher level throughout the, not just Idaho, but the nation. So that's all I have. Thanks.
And to answer the similar question again with the public comment, that the documentation or the question that was asked is not anything that we had available and was really what we were working towards presenting tonight. And so important communication from myself on that, but essentially that is what we were working towards and we have a tight timeline for when I got back from vacation on those weeks.
And please, don't miss the street hours of rechecking the spirits. You are failed because I could have easily reached out and told him, didn't. I was like, God, I'm sure somebody sorted it out. So that's an assumption. I don't know what assumptions make people.
Thank you. I just, Nick and I were in communication as well in my break on during the week when that was happening. So it was not totally unaddressed, but I thought we could have provided that response. Other comments here? All right. Seeing none, we will move forward to item number six on our agenda. We have seven job descriptions before us tonight. Each of these were included in our packet for our review. I believe we will conduct our discussion of all seven at the same time, but as we did previously, we'll act on them individually. So we will begin that. Something to add?
Like I said, a little bit while I was meandering through my presentation of the organizational thing. Some of these are new positions. The material services manager is a position that we had previously, but when it was vacated a few years ago, we did not replace that position, so we rewrote that from scratch. Strategic initiatives, another one that didn't exist. Marketing librarian, one that did not exist. One thing that hopefully was, apparently when you were reading these, was the consistency with which we wrote them, so that there was structural consistency with just formatting with the wording, with the roles and responsibilities of similar positions, manager, manager, supervisor, supervisor, librarian to librarian. And that sounds easy. Trish and I, we we spent a few days, hours debating semantics largely to make sure that we had these structured in a way that met our vision and hopefully made it more readily easy, readily available for you to discern what we were trying to do with these. So happy to answer specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Roe. Thank you, Director Roe. And I think that the word you used in your earlier presentation of intentional, right? That time spent on really crafting that language carefully and being very intentional about how those jobs are structured, how they relate to each other as opposed to just kind of slapping in, I need this, I need that in them. So I think that that's important work. Grueling, I'm sure. Questions, comments from the trustees? Seeing none, we will prepare for a motion upon. I would entertain a motion on the material services manager job description.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the material services manager job description as published.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny, for the comment. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to strategic initiatives manager job description. I would entertain a motion.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the strategic initiatives manager job description as published.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to branch supervisor job description and entertain a motion.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the branch supervisor job description as published.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the marketing librarian job description.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the marketing librarian job description as published.
Thank you. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Type? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the youth services librarian job description and entertain a motion.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the youth services librarian job description as published.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the community librarian job description. I entertain a motion.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the community librarian job description as published.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our seventh and final job description for consideration tonight, the digital services librarian position. I entertain a motion.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the digital services librarian job description as published.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number seven on our agenda. We have the salary schedule that was provided to us in our packet. This item is to place the job descriptions that we have approved in the correct grades for their positions and update the salary schedule to reflect that. Any questions on the salary schedule or comments? Or an entertain a motion?
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the salary schedule as published. And I further move that we make this information accessible to the public on the other website.
Okay. To be clear, we have a two-part motion. We would approve this salary schedule as written as well as posted on our website. Second, thank you, Destiny. Further comment?
Questions? Is it not published now?
In terms of? So, yes and no. It is on our website multiple times in the board packets, but it is not a piece that is on our deployment page. I would ask any other clarification if if it would be reasonable to delay putting that on until after the next board meeting in September so that we can complete the organizational design update pieces so that we I don't want to have something that's like half there.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I amend my previous motion to table the second iteration for future orders.
So the amended motion is to approve this salary schedule as written and postpone publication saying until a future date. Make sure that correctly. All right. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Knight?
Yes.
All ready? Then we have a motion and a second. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number eight, the hours of operation. We have a proposed change to the hours of operation for Tiny Library that is located at the Hill. If I understood correctly, it is the same number of hours per week. It's just a shift in the time of day from nine AM to 1 PM and changing that to 10 AM to 2 PM. But the total number of hours at Tiny is open, stays the same. Seeing it not. So any further questions or comments there? Seeing none? Oh, I was just curious what the reason was for that. Were there comments from the public that said, hey, this isn't working for us?
So one of the things that we were able to do in this past year is have one staff who's primarily dedicated to working at Tiny. And that allowed us to have additional insights that we had before, but to really quantify, like seeing it in person, you know, are we actively getting people at these times? Are we meeting the community need? And that nine to 10 hour had was quiet at the end of last school year, and that continued through the summer. And so yeah, that's largely why is we just weren't seeing the foot traffic and we were routinely ushering people out at one. And so meeting them where they're at with that. And as we have it on here, and this only goes through the end of this fiscal year, I believe it would be something if you don't want to have to have us again like next month essentially to modify what is there to go through next fiscal year, just by doing this a month early. I don't believe that is out of line, if you would walk through that. Not saying it. Happy, but just throwing that out there as a point of discussion for you to look at.
Thank you. I would consider or prefer to do it currently to implement that change, not waiting for next month if I understood correctly.
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear in what I meant. As it's written on here, we have it September 1st of 2023 to September 30th of 2023, which is essentially just the month of September. What I'm saying is if you would like to amend the September 30th date from 2023 to 2024, essentially it would be valid for 13 months instead of one month. And so you don't have to do one month and then a full month.
Got you. Thank you for that clarification. So the changes to Tiny are the only change proposed for us. So if we were to continue the hours of operation through fiscal year 2024, they would be the same operation, the same hours of library. Locations are currently open. The change to Tiny being a later start time, and I certainly, by the way, appreciate the responsiveness to the actual community demand of that location. So if the nature, maker of the motion is so inclined, that motion would need to approve the hours with the change of making the date 2024.
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
Director, I move that we approve the hours of operation as published with a change to effectively extend through fiscal year 2024.
Thank you. Second, too slow. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number nine, our future agenda items. As I mentioned earlier, I'm very hopeful that we'll have an agreement to look at for the South Branch. This will be a significant action item for the board, so we will review it in one month and approve it in the next to give plenty of opportunity for review, comment, question on that. We will look at publication of the salary schedule and the best place to put that on the website at a future meeting as well. Other items for consideration on future agenda? Okay. I brought this up in the past and I'm sorry, I can't remember what we decided as far as the timeline, but as far as either changing the reconsideration form or creating a new form to allow folks to request that an item may move. And I think it's particularly important because the vast majority of Meridian residents don't want to see items removed from the library. But I think it's important that we give them a way to kind of express moving them between sections because moving them out of library is an extreme that most of us don't want to approach.
That is something that we have discussed here a few times. We have staff currently researching it and we will hopefully have it. I think I said the last time that we would have it in September. That will still be our goal. I don't know that we will have it ready by then, though, with that organizational changes.
Okay. Thank you for that. But it sounded like we won't see that if not in September, maybe this fall for our consideration. So appreciate your reminder on that, Destiny. Any other items?
Director.
Go ahead, Josh.
I just want to say thank you to Nick and staff for the policy review schedule. That was an extremely useful document to kind of, hey, what, how many policies are there? Well, there's a lot. If I could, if you would indulge me to provide or like a link, like a clickable link that will take me to that current policy so I can review it, have all the bands, that would be, I think that'd be useful for all those trustees.
Sure. Thank you.
And if we could make that part of the, like, in every package, just recurring kind of thing, I think it would help give some visibility on or continue visibility on policy development.
And just to be clear for the public, our policies aren't posted on the website, but just keys of access to be able to find those.
Just one thing for you all to know. We have not reviewed the employee handbook in some time. We started a year ago on making redline changes to have reviewed by legal and to be able to bring it in front of you. We really started digging deep into what that looks like when we have been going through job descriptions and one thing that with us staff, we've been talking a lot about is terminology and purpose with the words that we use and why we use them, the way that we use them, and having repeatability and what we say to have that consistency throughout our documents, throughout our policies, throughout our job descriptions. And the handbook is one of those ones that, you know, has grown and trained and grown and trained over many, many years. And a cleaner version is going to be a much more useful way to look at what needs to happen. And so rather than having 75 pages of redline plus whatever space we run out of, probably getting into the order cussing over 100 by the time we found out how all those redlines, it's going to be difficult to actually see what some of those changes are and to have the proper structure. So So I believe the intent is to delay having that in front of you a little bit longer so that we can properly rewrite the handbook essentially, so.
Thank you.
In case you were, I don't know if that, wondered why that one was in front of you a few times ago.
I appreciate that information. Anything else? All right. Seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda. It is 8:24 and we are adjourned.